I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to a halt.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Level?
Here.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Parnell?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. We have treasures recommendations. Typically, we don't have items that we move on during our work sessions, but this had to be done before the end of the month, so we do have one item. So we have treasures recommendation 3A. Do I have a motion for approval of permanent appropriations fiscal year 2020?
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, we approved temporaries back in June because we have to have temporary appropriations in place by July 1. And then, we have to approve permanent appropriations by October 1. So, this is our last board meeting in September, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. The difference that you're going to see from the temporaries to the permanents in the general fund, you're going to see an increase over $4 million, and that is because of the budget stabilization transfer that is in place. So, in order to move that money into a budget stabilization reserve, we had to increase the appropriations in our transfers, so you're going to see that increase. You're also going to see some changes with some of our grant funds because we now know more in the 400 and 500 funds on our grants. But, other than that, like I said in my email to you earlier this week, there's no material changes from the temporary appropriations. We will be talking about the five-year forecast in November this year because they changed the law. We usually did that in October, so we'll know more when we get ready to do the five-year forecast again. But, this is what we have and what we know at this time. Do you have any questions? I didn't plan on going over the presentation. They're there for your reference.
So, we are appropriating $4 million more than what we expected to in June.
Correct.
And what is the reason for the $4 million?
And the reason is because of the transfer into the budget stabilization, that rainy day fund. So-
So, that $4 million is going into the rainy day fund, or is-
It goes into the- It goes into the rainy day fund, but we have to have a transfer out into the rainy day. And then, the other thing that's weird about this, because it's all general fund, you're also going to see a revenue that is- so, it's offset. The revenue's going to increase by the same amount that the transfer out is going to increase.
Is the money coming into-
Correct. So, it's really- it's a net zero, but we have to show it.
The money's moving from a reserve fund into it.
Correct.
To the rainy day.
Mm-hmm.
Just to make that clear for everybody.
Yeah. Into the rainy day fund, yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, in our board work session, and start with facilities.
Sure. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but we're going to postpone that meeting. We're going to have some educational planners come in.
Oh, sure thing.
We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but we're going to have that postponed. We're working on some educational planners to come in and help the committee look at things that are not typical brick and mortar, but what does education look like in the future? And how would our facilities accommodate that in the future or so? Whether it's looking at, you know, the innovative classrooms, what's that going to look like? How's that going to impact the way we outline our facilities? And with a number of classrooms, the kind of spaces we need. So, it's more of a philosophical discussion that we want to have going forward. But, educational planners are the ones that would help us, guide us through that conversation. There's several of them out there, and we're going to bring in two to three just to talk about what they can provide as an option for us and decide if we want to use them or not, or just go internally. So, that's part of the committee's decision if we want to utilize an outside service or go through just using our own people to do the philosophical discussion about education and impact on facilities.
So, we're going to slide the October 21st, or I'm sorry, the meeting tomorrow to October 21st.
Yeah, I put a placeholder for October 21st right now, and we'll have to look at that as people's schedules. I just canceled it for tomorrow and put a placeholder there, and if-
Got it.
We need to look at a different date, we can do that.
What's the cost of those kind of services?
I don't know. Depends on the scope that we want to define. We haven't done any pricing, so we'd bring them in and talk about what value they would add. We could talk about that kind of cost and determine if it's a good value or not for us to do that. So, I don't have a cost on that right now.
So, during the meeting, this was kind of towards the end of the meeting, we had the conversation about bringing the educational consultants in to really, like Chris said, help us pretty much articulate what are some of the trends in education. And during that conversation, I probably was the one that questioned it the most, why we would need to bring somebody in and spend that money when I feel like we've got a pretty capable team, knowledgeable team, and kind of running ahead of the pack, I would assume, in the region, or what I can see in the region. However, one of the things that we said it would be due diligence is really to look out there. Who are the educational specialists? Bring them in. To present what they would actually be doing, and then hold that against what we think that we could do internally. And then, from that point, see the cost and see if there would be an ROI as we move forward to inform the facilities plan.
So, bringing them in isn't going to cost us anything until we make a decision.
It's a sales pitch essentially when they come in to tell us what they would be doing for us. And so, I think that it's- on our board's part, I think it's important that we do that just to be responsible and to make sure that we are hearing every aspect of the planning. If we really want a facilities plan that represents kind of a holistic approach to understanding where we need to move in the future, especially one that's built off of the strategic plan that we all approved, I think it's important that we at least consider bringing those people in. But, again, I also put my hand up and say, I think we've got some incredible talent on our team, so it would be really interesting to hear what they're going to do and compare that with the talent that we have to decide if it's something that we need to spend.
Will the board get some feedback on those proposals before you move forward on it?
I'm sure we'll have a recommendation from the committee and some information about what was presented. Is there an ROI that we see in it or not?
The other thing I'll do is, and all of us can do this in some ways, is just to put the net out to some of the districts around us that have gone through this process ahead of us and what they did, and just to get some feedback from them as well, and other districts across the state of Ohio.
When I received the briefing, I just wanted to let the rest of the board know. When I received the briefing, one of the things that I asked about, and you mentioned the educational consultant and the options, was not just looking at what innovation means in the classroom, but also out of the box in terms of reconfigurations and also reducing buildings.
Yeah.
When we're looking at fiscal sustainability, I think that's an important piece that we need to consider as well, particularly with our demographics staying fairly flat, that that's, I think, a consideration we need to have.
And I think it's like, it's an opportunity to talk about those things, like you just said. I mean, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying, we wouldn't just consolidate just to consolidate, but if it makes sense in the scope of this whole project, then it might be a good thing for us to do.
But, if we're looking at a consultant, someone who has that kind of a mindset, I think would be valuable.
Yep.
Right. Any other discussion from the facilities team?
No, I think we're just still doing a lot of homework, doing preliminary stages.
We will be for a while. You all were briefed on the student population bubble going through and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, we had-
Okay.
Yeah.
A temporary bubble.
I don't know. I like, with the facilities plan, I think that, or at least the way I'm posturing myself during this process is really just kind of staying in the moment, walking through the process, getting all the data and the feedback from the people that have done this in a lot of districts around the country, and being in the moment to realize, what does enrollment say about our future trends? What are the future trends out there that we need to be running for? How does our strategic plan influence that? And not getting ahead of myself and thinking about, oh, no, what could happen, or what do we need to do? And so, when we were doing the enrollment study, it was great to see the 12 options that they put up there. However, half of them are unrealistic. Like, I mean, we immediately said, that doesn't make sense, right? But, the fact that they went through those and they looked at them, and we were able to consider them and talk through them, and kind of whittle it down. And so, I think that as a board, it's helpful that if we all just remain in the moment and just try our best to kind of walk through this process as it goes. And questions and statements like that are perfect, right? Like, from input of saying, hey, like, if we do this and we get consultants, let's keep in mind, what would a reduced configuration look like, and what impact would that have? And so, giving us the input is really important. I think we're considering a lot, but, again, it's through the lens of the two people that are on the committee, so any stakeholder input's important. That's all I have.
It's good, just as a reminder, dealing facts, because I had a nice lady ask me the other day, I hear you're building a third high school.
Yeah.
I heard that too.
The things out on social media that you see, you just, I mean, we've literally had three meetings, and we've done the enrollment study and got a binder.
Yeah, and I heard we're closing two buildings, I also heard.
Like, really?
We shouldn't be like drawing- I just don't want to make sure we're not drawing conclusions about something when all we're literally doing is being good stewards of taxpayer dollars by looking at the investment we have. Like, that's what we want to do. We want to look at our investment, we want to pair it with the strategic plan, look at trends, and see what is the best possible solution for the future. That's really it. But, I think I've said that before, so I'm good.
All right.
Live in the moment.
Any other discussion before we move on to transportation? Right. Who's doing transportation, Chris? Chris has got all the good stuff today.
I was asked to look at high school transportation overall, as far as cost, moving forward, just to get an estimate. And I've worked with the Peterman team. We've actually gone through and looked at all of our current eighth graders through 11th graders, and they contacted all the private and parochial schools in the area and got the number of students that live in Lakota boundaries that go to these various high schools that would be eligible for transportation. And Ken Stevens and Sue Pruitt took all that information and actually did a mock routing of what that would look like, just to get an idea what that would be. As you can see, in the top part is the green area, and that is based on both transporting grades nine through 12 and just freshmen. So, there's two different looks that we have there. And it looks at, when you do transportation, you usually have three different tiers. For instance, right now, we do a junior high tier, elementary tier, and early childhood tier, and the buses run those routes, so they do more than one thing during the day. In this model, in the green, we don't have that luxury where we could do multi-tiering based on the bell time. So, this model in the green is based on one bus doing one thing. So, they would either do a freshman run or do a main campus run. And that's basically, for the most part, all they would do during that day. So, it would be a modified schedule, the number of hours that we would have, but we still required the bus asset to get the kids and get them to and from school. So, if you look at it, we estimated anywhere between 16 to 18 buses per campus and 15 parochial buses, or private buses, to do our parochial students. And the 15 would be the same whether we do freshmen or nine through 12.
So, they didn't look at doing like a tiered, where they'd go through the same neighborhood and get the freshman, like, nine through 12, and drop the kids off at the freshman building, and then go over to main campus? This is just assuming separate, completely separate routes?
Correct.
For every bus?
Correct.
Yeah.
Single vehicle does one route?
Every bus would be- so, if you look at East Freshmen, there were 16 buses that would just do East Freshmen. Go up and go around, pick up all the kids for East Freshmen, drop them off at East Freshmen. There would be another 17 buses just to do the same thing for the main campus.
Oh, I see. Then you've got the modified down below. Okay. All right.
So, basically, what the green's saying is, we need 83 more buses to do-
Well, why wouldn't- is that what this modified thing is? When you change-
Yeah.
So, that would require fewer buses?
Correct.
Because they would be doing double routes?
Correct, because right now, there's not enough time between the bell times to have a bus do more than one thing. If you look, mainly, in the morning, we're fine. It's in the afternoon is where we don't have enough time, because typically, you need 50 minutes in between bell times for buses to get around and do the drop-offs and return back to another school. In the afternoons, there's only, what, 15 minutes in between the dismissal between the freshmen and the main campus? So, there's not enough time in the afternoons to go drop off all the freshmen and come back and do the main campus.
And this would change hand in hand with the facilities, depending on what configuration we end up-
Correct.
Going with in the end, right?
Correct. Yeah, this is basically not changing anything that we're doing right now as far as operations. Just if we did just ninth grade or nine through 12, what that cost would be. Not changing anything.
And Todd, because you brought it up, and I don't think you're the only one with a thought, I think you're thinking if 912 were on one campus, this would change.
Correct.
We're not saying that's going to happen.
It's a scenario.
It's a scenario.
Better check the Facebook page in five minutes. It's going to be on there. Aaron's on it.
So, if you look at the nine through 12, it's about $4.5 million to do all nine through 12, all Lakota and private and parochial schools that are eligible. And if you just look at the freshmen, it's 2.6, almost $2.7 million just to do freshmen in the current bell time schedule that we have. That's what the green portion says up here.
That's an additional.
Additional, correct.
Okay.
Chris, what's the number of private school students that we'd be servicing?
I didn't write down that number, I'm sorry.
Can you get it?
Last time I looked, we used to have around 2,000.
2,000, and it's right around our number.
Yeah. It's typically what we have for-
2,000?
Across the board, nine through 12, right across the total. K-12.
So, can you get that number for nine through 12?
Yep.
Thank you. And when we discussed this last, I had asked if we had any consideration for modifying how we're doing high school. Do we look at neighborhood drop-off points where we could just hit one neighborhood, the same place, and not necessarily doing the house-to-house that we've been doing? Trying to modify what parents are going through when they're dropping kids off at both the high school and the freshman building?
Right. When we establish stops, they got to be within a half mile of a student's home, that's by law. So, any stop would have to be, we can do half-mile increments.
Do we consider that and see if that made any difference in the process?
You still need the same number of, you just have fewer stops. You still need the same number of buses to get to the number of kids on the, to school. It might improve the time of, timing of how long you ride the bus, but the number of buses would still be the same.
Or the 15 minutes in between.
Potentially, yes.
You'd still have the same number of buses, right? Because you're still putting the same number of kids on the bus.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay.
Then, we looked at, okay, if we did any kind of change, what could we do to modify and be more efficient and have the buses do more than just one activity and do a double route? It's not the most efficient. We prefer to do three. And there still could be some buses that might be able to do three, but for the most part, we said they would do two routes. So, they would do a freshman route, then they do a main campus route. So, they'd go pick up the freshmen, drop off the freshmen, and leave and go pick up the main campus students, and then drop them off. So, when we looked at that, we're almost able to reduce the number of buses in half for Lakota students. The number of parochial students, buses will remain the same. And to do nine through 12, with a modified bell time, you're about $3.4 million for nine through 12. And the modification we would make is to move the bell time back 35 minutes for the main campus.
So, it says here, an 8:40 start and a 3:15 end.
Correct.
So, that wouldn't interfere with after-school activities or any of the-
I mean, what is that, and what does that do to like the zero period and the, I mean, what does that do curriculum-wise?
It has implications.
Yeah.
Right.
That's my-
And we haven't talked about that at all, because we do have kids that go from the freshman campus to the main campus to take courses and things of that nature. We'd have to still look at that and make sure that the bell schedules would still accommodate that, but this is just a strict-
Already doing that, so that's not an additional cost?
It's not additional cost. I'm saying how they marry up right now with the bell times.
Right.
With students going from the freshman to the main campus. We have a system now where they're able to make sure they can get there in a timely fashion, get the course they need, and get back to the freshman building.
Are we transporting for zero-period classes, or is that a parent's responsibility?
We don't transport any high school kids right now, so.
Sorry. You're right. But, we're not, would we transport for zero-period, or would that be a-
I think we probably should.
Individual responsibility.
Because I would hate to limit student options based on, I got to get back to the other school to get home, and I can't take that class. I would have a hard time.
You're talking about from freshman to high school?
Yeah.
That may impact the number of buses you would need, because the bus that is doing a zero-period for a high school kid may not be able to do another route, because they're going to just do that one. So, there could be some implications on that, or maybe they have to ride their freshman bus, and we drop them off, then they head off on another route, if the timing works. We could look at ways to do it, but it may add a little bit more.
Obviously, nothing's easy in any of this.
Correct.
Have we done any kind of a survey of our current high school families to see how many would actually be interested in this option?
We haven't, but we can.
Which option? The bottom option, or the, you mean just busing in general?
Bringing back busing, excuse me, bringing back busing in general. I think it would be useful to bind up with our current population.
Have we done that before, ever? I'm just curious.
Yes.
It was quite some time ago.
The hard thing is, a lot of parents will say, yeah, I want to sign my kid up, because if I can't get them there that day, or they don't have practice, or I don't want, then I want them to have a ride. So, if they say they want to ride, we have to route them. Whether they use the bus or not, we can figure that out as we get through the year. But typically, when we, we've asked in the past, especially for upperclassmen, you plan on riding the bus? And everyone said yes, and but halfway through the year, most of the kids don't even ride, even though they said yes.
Well, as is usual, how we phrase the survey will make a difference. So, maybe it's, would you ride the bus 100% of the time, 75, 50, 25, or whatever?
But if they say 25, then we still have to route as if they're going to be there.
But it would still be good to know.
Right.
Right.
And we base on the historical operations at high schools where usually 100% of freshmen ride, or pretty close to it. Most of the sophomores, 75% or better ride. Then, as you become a junior, senior, you get fewer and fewer.
Right.
So, we push, we put everybody on the bus, but we just did a percentage of those that we think would actually ride, based on-
Yeah, and your assumption you built into these numbers was 25% for juniors and seniors for people that would actually ride.
You might ask in the survey, how many plan to get parking passes to?
You could just take historical data there, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Look at who's pulled passes for the last three years and make a predictive measure into what it'd be. I mean, I think that, I think that, you know, when you're looking at 10, 11, and 12, I don't know what the ROI would be in regards to offering busing, because they were quarter-filled buses when we did it.
Right.
Ninth grade, I know I've said this before, I mean, anecdotally, that's what I hear all the time from parents. It's a ninth-grade busing struggle. We've intentionally separated our ninth graders into a separate building with a different start time, and we've cut their busing. And if you've got multiple kids in multiple schools, it's a barrier. I mean, it's legit. And so, I think data's important. I think data can help drive their decisions, but I think that from what I hear out in the community and what I'm hearing in the neighborhood, we've got to consider something with ninth grade. We've got to figure it out, and whether that's, we hit pause until the facilities plan is done and figure it out at that point, or if we want to have further discussions, but I think it's a legit concern of our community. It's a lot of money. I'm not going to say it's not.
I was going to say that the four percent five-
It's a lot of money.
But it's about priority.
Yeah.
I mean, if this is the priority, then you're going to spend the $2.7 million to bus your freshmen.
And I think if you were to ask families that have two parents that are working, and that they have kids in multiple buildings, and they're trying, they don't have a connection to a 10th to 12th grader, they can't figure it out, and they're sacrificing their work schedule to try to sit in carpool lines and try to make, I don't think that's fair to our community that has supported us, to say that ninth-grade busing isn't a priority.
No, I totally agree with Brad, and the fact that freshman pickups like at 2:30 in the afternoon is-
Yeah, I mean-
It's a hardship on a lot of people.
Yeah.
And I think that's a valid question, whether we move forward with this or not, but can we modify our bell schedule to make that easier on parents?
We'd have to take a look at that. Also, some of the buildings share staff too, so that's an implication for this as well. The other thing that I would throw in, and I would hope everyone would agree, is if we did something with ninth- I don't know what saying we are, but another scenario, if we did something with ninth grade, but then down the road, we merged ninth into the 10, 11, 12 building. I don't think that's, I don't think we pull that away at that time. You know what I'm saying? Can't give something right now at this point and then-
And then pull that, that's been my concern this week.
Unless it was, you know, a money issue, but I think that's part of the equation as well.
Well, to me, again, I appreciate the difference, when you look at it in the first scenario, that the difference is nearly $2 million in just busing ninth graders versus busing nine through 12. But if you look at the modifications, then that difference is $700,000. So, again, while I realize that ninth graders are predominant concern, when you look at the differential being $700,000 to be able to do nine through 12,
Sure.
that to me makes that look more viable than if you look at just not modifying anything, which I don't think any of us would support not making any modifications to do this. You're not going to do it unless you're going to make it as efficient as possible.
And I think my internal struggle is that, does busing drive academics, or does academics drive busing, right? Like, are we going to change our academic schedule and offerings and everything to make busing work? Or do we do opposite? Do we know that busing might cost a little more, and we have to embrace that because we believe that this is the best academic schedule or offering for our students? So, it's what you, I think that we all have to internally struggle with that, right? Like, what is the cost versus benefit, and what is the best offering to our students? And when you get down to the fact that we're sharing teachers and things like that, your soft costs may completely outweigh the number that's on the paper.
Yeah.
Jenny, I know there's been different scenarios with the state in funding transportation, and where are we right now with being on the guarantee and the impact on busing?
So, so, right now, the funding that we're in in this year and next, we're not going to get a whole lot of help from the state if we wanted to do something with transportation. But in the future, that cost could be impacted by some of the changes that are being discussed, especially when we start talking about the calendars and busing, like our parochial schools. We still have to bus even when they're in session and we're not. And so, that's a big discussion item on, should that totally be the local district's cost? Or should the state help with that? So, that could be something, and I forget that figure.
Quarter million dollars.
Yeah. So, I think it could, it could be helped, but I'm going to go back again to, I've, you know, I've been here. I think I came in like right when it, we started making cuts to transportation. And I feel like we have this conversation, it's a reoccurring conversation. And so, you know, we are talking about facilities and all that, but that's going to be some time before we have that figured out, or any of that. If this is something that the board feels like it is a priority, and we need to make plans, and we need to do it, there's time issues, because to try to find the bus drivers for-
It's at least an eight-month lead time. We need an eight-month advance notice if you want to do something like this. So, if you want it, for the start of next school year, we're getting pretty close to that timeframe. Where you guys would need to make a decision, if you want to start at the beginning of the school year. So, just to keep in mind, it's going to take that long to get all the assets acquired from Peterman and do a heavy- we already struggle right now to get enough drivers for 167 routes.
Right.
They go up to 220 routes. You know, we're going to struggle to get another 50 drivers or so for that.
And maybe you start out with, if it's something that the board wants to do, maybe you start out with saying, because to make changes with the timing on the, I think that's going to be a longer process, and I don't think you're going to have that finished in time to get the drivers. So, what I think you should look at is, if you want to do anything with busing, you should look at just freshmen first because of the time issues on getting the bus drivers and all that. And then, start talking about, you know, maybe the timing.
Maybe at that point, if we did start, and I'm not saying we are, started with freshman busing, then we would be farther along in the facilities plan. I mean, I just really worry, we've worked so hard to give kids more choices academically, and if we adjust these bell schedules, and it's going to implicate that, if we, I mean, when we do, if we do 912. I mean, we worked really hard on that, and-
I mean, we worked really hard on that, and.
Right.
Not to mention the contractual issues that we.
Right.
Yeah.
So, instead of anecdotal data, and I think we all hear it out in the community, we certainly hear about families impacted, like Brad had said. And that's been a consistent issue since we made the cuts. So that has not changed. However, I feel like we're dealing with a lot of anecdotal what ifs. So perhaps between now and January, when we would need to make that decision, we could start laying out some facts to go behind that. Rather, it's pulling our current families, or here's exactly how changing the bell times would impact, we're saying it could impact academics, but I'm not sure I see any specifics in that comment. Can we narrow that down and put some more down on paper, so we can see what that looks like?
I have a running list.
Wonderful.
Jenny, can you help remind me, we saved on the current contract of busing, this last renegotiation by 2 million. Have we reallocated that 2 million in another place? So we're really talking about 696,432.76.
Over what we used to pay, yes.
Used to pay.
Before we negotiated, we did.
But we have a 2 million savings from this last negotiation.
We, we saved over 2 million dollars with our last bus negotiation. And at that time, I remember that discussion, maybe with the savings, we might want to reallocate it towards picking up freshmen, and we did talk about that.
So Chris, we would only need 34 buses if we did just freshmen, is that correct?
I just read it as 49, because we'd need the 39 for East and West freshmen, but we'd still have to do the parochial, and that's 15.
Oh, okay.
So it's 49 buses if we just do freshmen versus 50 if we do both.
That's right, I always forget about the parochial.
So, freshmen and 10 through 12, so as far as routes, it's one different.
Yeah, the number of buses will, would be roughly the same, it's just the number of hours when you do the routing, you'd have a little bit more hours to do everybody else, you'd have a little bit more cost, that's where the cost comes from, going from 4.5 hours to 6 hours to do everybody per route.
So the 2.6 for just freshmen includes parochial freshmen as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
31% of the cost.
If it's 2,000 kids, it's about 165-ish per grade level, if that's right.
Right.
I'm going K through 12, well, yeah, K through 12.
And I, well, okay, that's something, I guess, for a later question, if we decide.
I feel like this is an issue we keep talking about and not making an actual decision on, instead of, and kicking this can down the road, so I think.
Well, I'm here, we need more information.
Yeah, 'cause I, I got this information today, so, and I just did the bell time on my own. So I haven't had any conversation with anybody else, talked about the further impact, like Linda said, you have these opportunities that we're providing. But we haven't talked as a team yet on how this would actually impact the educational.
Or if it would.
Or if it would, so, I just did this as strictly a numbers-based analysis, and if we wanna take a deeper dive, then we have a little bit more work to do on the impact on, on everything else, for sure.
So is it the interest of the board to continue to pursue the impact that this would have, and get these answers, and keep this conversation alive at this point?
Yes.
It is for me.
Yeah, I'd like to see more information.
I've already expressed that.
All right, so we'll continue to move forward and explore the options, you have your running list of questions that need to be answered.
I do.
And then, when do you think it's realistic to get answers, so we can have further discussion on this?
I'm hoping we have something more firmed up by our next meet, our regular meeting in October. So I have down on my list, actual number of parochial school students, K-12, impacts on modified schedule with, with student and staff schedules, transportation survey about riding the bus, about parking passes, what else am I missing, if anything?
This hasn't been added, so you're not missing it, but I'd also like to see, it sounds like here, even with the modified bell times, we're still talking about doing a freshman run, and then a main campus run. And what the cost would be if we did one run that picked up both sets of students, and then just made a stop at the freshman building, and then was able to go to main campus. And likewise in the afternoon, so then they don't have to go through the neighborhood twice. They can go through the neighborhood one time with both sets of kids, so the, whoever gets on first is gonna have to wait a little bit before they go through the neighborhood, but I'd like to see what the cost would be of that potential option, having all the kids together.
Chris, you got that one?
And I think it's important to keep in mind that it's a reallocation of current dollars, the pot of money is still the same pot of money. So whatever we do needs to be sustainable over the long term.
For me, it's hard when we have the cash balance we do to continue to tell our families that we can't afford busing.
And so that was gonna be my other statement, you know, the 2 million dollars that we saved in the last contract, but also that our cash balance on the budget forecast is gonna continue to grow to over 10 million, over, 10 million in addition, over the next five years, and I, I'm in the same spot. I mean, the conversations come up over and over and over again about busing, and, you know, if we have to have conversations about how money's spent in other places, I just, I believe that we made, I'm done, I've, I've already said it. Good.
All right, any further discussion at this time?
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to report card and quality profile report.
Help me out. Go that way.
And I did not mention, Adam Zink is sitting at the table tonight.
He is?
I, you know, and I should've mentioned that when I went over the appropriations, but he did the heavy lifting, getting things together in my absence this past week, so.
Jenny, may I add to that?
Thank you, Adam.
And the newly engaged Adam Zink is sitting at the table tonight, so congratulations, Adam.
Yes, yes, newly engaged, that's right.
Yay, congratulations.
Don't do it. Sorry.
Now, now.
I have a few documents to share, I'll wait till they, they go around to everybody. But the first piece of paper that I passed out is sort of the snapshot overall on the, on the local report card from the state. So while I wish these were all As, they're not, and I could talk about that a little bit, give the overview here, and certainly try to answer as many questions as I can, and if I can't answer, then I'll, I'll bring them back to the next board meeting. But I'm gonna, I, I have the document that just went out, that's the snapshot, plus sort of the backing, sort of understanding Ohio's school report card information from ODE as well. There is a ton of information on the website, if you go, and if you haven't had a chance, I would encourage you to do that. You can see that our district grade overall is a B. Obviously, I don't need to read too much of this, but there are some highlights that I wanna point out, that I'll get to here in just a second. But when you're looking at the top six areas that the, that the state looks at, achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation rate, K6 reading, and then prepared for success, I'll talk about those in just a second, but we are pretty much in line where we were last year, albeit there's been some changes from the state in terms of what they're measuring and how they're measuring things. Probably the biggest sort of red flag to me would be indicators met under achievement, prepared for success also, but the K3 reading point part, and that's also a statewide issue, so. While my focus has been and always will be on Lakota, I look to at what our comparison groups have done, and how we line up with that, so. It's not excuse, it's just how, how do we do against the schools that look like us and should function like us? You might as well just sit up front. And again, I encourage you to take these home, take a look at them, take a look at the website, but this is our comparison group that Mr. Kramer and Mr. Zink are passing out now, in terms of demographics and how ODE looks at us versus other schools, and so just for easy pickings, Lakota's at the top, and then you can see the rest of the districts down below that are similar to ours. There are a lot of surprises, I think, on the, on the comparison group, not just from us, but some of the other Hilliards and, and Masons and, and Sycamores and districts like that. I would say to you, some of the things that stick out to me, the glaring, again, what I'll call red flags, would be indicators met for our district, so we were 13 out of 24. I will say, again, not an excuse, but the metrics are what the metrics are, and the data's the data. And the state did make some changes in how we score, and the cut scores also went up, so I'll get that here and point that out in just a second. Our performance index is listed, gap closing has been a B for us. But then, you know, there are some other highlights that we can't neglect in terms of progress and straight A's across the board there. I think only five other districts in our comparison group did that. I am intrigued, as an educator, by the reading scores, K3 literacy in our comparison group, that nobody scored above a C. Which I think says a lot maybe about what we're measuring and how we're measuring it as a state. And so, again, I want that to be an A, but don't get, don't get me wrong, but the metrics behind that, that these 20 high functioning school districts, the highest you could get was a C. Graduation rate continues to be impressive for our district. The prepared for success is really essentially a couple of things. It's a little bit career tech, but it is more about our AP students and remediation in terms of AP and honors diploma. So when you look at our district versus some of the others in our comparison group, I think probably our biggest opportunity as a district for upping that would be an honors diploma quadrant, if you were. Some of the metrics involved in the ACT remediation, I'm not sure, based on the data that curriculum team and I looked at last week, that we can make that much of an impact there. But it looks like maybe in the honors diploma, that, that might be something we can do and study and get better at for the most part. The other thing that, in terms of AP as well, we don't offer a lot right now currently. We do, but we have some kids that don't take a lot of classes their senior year. And so I think maybe we need to look at the offerings, maybe we need to look at the number of credits that's needed to graduate, and I think that might up at that end, and I think that's a better opportunity for some of our kids. And I see heads nodding, so maybe that's been a thing, I'm not sure, but I certainly think it's worth us exploring. We've talked about it at team, about kids that are getting the credits they need pretty quick, and then they kinda fizzle out. And again, not all kids, certainly, and, but there is a, a population that do. So that's one of the things that we are taking a look at and studying. Another, and I'm not trying to kill you trees and bombard you with paper, and I promise you're not getting all of this. Thank you. What's coming around now too, and it goes back to the indicators met and where our shortfalls were, and I'll let those get around for here in just a second. Faster.
Thank you.
So the easy way to take a look at this is, these are the, the testing achievement results for the subject and for the grade matter, so the really easy column is percent passage rate, and so, I know you know this, but I'm just gonna repeat it, the, the cutoff is 80% by the state. So you look at some of the red, and you see that we're close, but not close enough, and some of the areas probably aren't where they should be. But the curriculum team has already scheduled meetings with these grade levels and these subject areas to talk about what we need to do, so that we're not deficient again next year. So those scheduled, those meetings have already been scheduled, haven't happened yet. We also did for our first, or our, after the school year started, a professional development day, focused on some of these areas already with our staff, and that's something that we're, that's on our list. So I would tell you that our priority as a district should be on the achievement results, the performance, or the percent passage for sure, and then the prepared for success metric as well. Catching my breath.
Will you be coming back to us with specifics for what you plan to do on each one of these?
Yeah, we, we are, and we're kinda dealing, or drilling down right now with the curriculum team in terms of what is sort of the corrective action plans that we can put in place. But, it's one, it's one look at our school, it's an important one.
I know the prepared for success, at least historically, has always looked at, if you don't take the ACT or SAT, they assume that you fail.
Yeah.
So that always troubles me with how that metric works, that, is that still the case in how they're measuring it this year?
Yes.
Which is fascinating, because now colleges are starting to get rid of ACT, SAT.
Exactly, that's ridiculous.
I know, and so, I'm on the report card committee for BASSA, and we're having those external, internal fights now.
So.
And Lakota's been at the table for trying legislatively to change the report card too, and I think that will be picked up by somebody else in January, Representative Duffy was termed out, but I think it'll be picked up again. So we'll be at the table again.
And if, and, and you know, again, first and foremost Lakota, but if you look at some of these other school districts in our comparison group, look at the indicators met, that some of those Fs are shocking, and some of the numbers are shocking, so it's not, it's not a, it's a, it's a statewide problem.
Yeah, and this is, like we say, one piece, this is not indicative of who we are.
So, it's really easy for your eyes to go to the D's and the C's, which I think legitimately, you know, there needs to be healthy conversation around that, especially when you start to drill down towards the buildings, and really looking at discrepancy between buildings.
Yep.
I mean, holistically though, I think it's really important that we make sure that we focus on that progress as well. And that A, and the reason being is that that is our individual student growth from year to year. If there's only any measure, metric, that is probably of significance, it's that one. Because that's really tracking the growth that our kids individually are having, and the impact that our teachers are having. And so if you look at that, and we're looking at As across the board on that, that tells us that our initiatives around personalized learning are really taking hold and doing well. And you can see some of our comparative districts didn't get As across it. And so while I am in complete agreement that we need to really dig and look at, you know, prepared for success, especially improving at-risk K3 readers, however, the metrics are completely wrong on that, and we know that, or the grades would be better across the stra- the state. And the achievement is what it is, right? You're talking about a snapshot on one test, and as we really have conversations with the board, do we wanna teach to the test?
Right.
And if we wanna teach to the test, then we can get that to an A pretty quick, but what I, what I think you notice is, if you look at progress, and you look at the A, we're saying that teaching to the test isn't nearly as important as teaching to the student. When you teach to the student, their growth is occurring, and that's what you see with that A. So anyway, I, that's where my focus goes. Yes, absolutely, the Cs and the D's need to improve, I think everybody wants that for the health of our district and for our students. But I think that we can't lose sight of that progress, that A, because that is incredible, and that speaks a ton to our teaching and our learning that's happening in the classrooms.
I agree with you about that being an important measure, Brad. I also think when we look at being a district of choice, and we see a neighboring district whose name I won't mention, that did succeed across the board.
Sure.
I have to ask, what are they doing differently? And this is still a measure when families come to look at Lakota, families are looking at this, they do regard this as important. I think there's also a disconnect in a, in addition to the other comments made. When we're talking about, we, we think four, four different areas are totally suitable, it's not just enrollment in higher ed, but it's enlistment, it's entrepreneurship, it's employment. And yet, we're still measured on how many kids are going on to college, we're still measured on kids doing ACTs, and.
Preach.
I don't, I, well, I have been, you know that, but still, this is what we're measured against, and other districts are being more successful than we are, and our core competency is student achievement. And I think we have to look at that, and again, I'd like to see what we're doing specifically.
Yep.
I do like to see the value add, I think that's really an important point for us. And it does show that things are happening in the classroom, but the other pieces still matter too.
Yeah, and I, when I, when I look, when I look at it, I go right to the red, you know, to counter Brad's point.
I, I do as well, and I think families looking to move here do that as well.
But there's a lot of good things in here too. Maybe.
And we have, we do have di- different demographics than our neighboring districts as well, which plays into our ability, especially with the K3, when we have a more transient population, or if there's significantly more poverty in our district, more resources need to be allocated, so there's, there are other factors that play into just, it's not apples and apples, so I think that we've gotta be very care, while I appreciate the comparison, I think, you know, we've gotta be careful of that as well, because every district is different, every district has different kids in it, and every district has different initiatives, and what we believe is the best, and, you know, we could look at our neighboring district, and I can tell you that they didn't get As across the board of progress as well, so. Again, I think we've got a lot great going on, but I agree, I'm not, I'm not discrediting what you're saying at all, I think that that's important to look at the D's and C's, and to have plans around that, but I also believe it's more important to look at the discrepancy between the buildings within our district as well, and having those conversations, which I'm sure is happening.
One, one of the things too, that we looked at with the curriculum team already, was on the prepared for success, when you look at what our percentage was on the prepared for success, when you look at what our percentage was versus our comparison group, um, our, our poverty level is a little bit higher. Not a little bit, there's a significant, um, difference between that and this district we're not naming and other schools around us as well. And that, that's part of it. So-
It is.
It's another piece.
And if you look at the state data, there was a direct correlation in all these-
Yeah.
All these figures that could be, that was statistically significant for every school district in the state when you were looking at that.
I don't think it's about making excuses. I think it's about realizing what you've got and how you can do the best you can and putting wraparound services around the areas that you needed. Just making sure you're looking at the right information and not being distracted by the stuff that isn't really going to move the ship forward.
And listening to our community that they do want to look at the growth of the whole child and not just the testing piece. So I guess that's the caution for me is while we want to look at this, I also don't want to abandon all the other pieces that we're trying to grow that our community has said, don't just teach my kid to the test. Our employers are saying, we don't need somebody who can just take a rote test and do rote memorization. You need to change the type of learning. So I feel like these are lagging indicators of where we're headed as a district and what our community has told us, our students need to be successful adults versus successful test takers.
Right.
So I think, I hope we balance that as we move forward and don't have a pendulum swing again, which can sometimes happen in education, away from the whole child and simply towards test preparation.
Right, right.
So-
I would say like in a perfect world, how would we measure the success of our students? I would say, we don't know that until about five years after they graduate.
Right.
Are they still in school?
Right.
Do they have a good job? Are they doing something? That, that would be more telling to me for us as a community and as a district than something like this.
And how many kids got an honors diploma?
Right.
On more of a-
I have a thought on that, but they won't listen to me yet.
On a micro level, back to that, when we first put in the XH Bell, something we talked about was helping kids with ACT and SAT preparation during that time. And I know that's something that I don't believe ever has happened. Um, so that's just something else to throw on the drawing board as something that might be helpful if you're looking at ways to tackle that beyond the honors diploma.
Are we considering making that a mandatory piece for students in high school as a measure of success?
I don't think it would be mandatory, but I think maybe we, it's because it's not even an offering, or I mean, as robust as it could be, but I wouldn't make them do that.
Make them what, take an ACT prep class?
And is the cost too a barrier for some students not to do it?
Probably. But I don't, I don't think it should be.
Fearing help and all those other pieces that go into the thinking about, do I do this or don't I?
Right.
I mean, there are schools that require all their students to take it.
Yes, they do.
And they cover the costs. And guess what? They get a really good grade because they all took the test.
All took the test.
So if that's something that the board says we want to spend money on, I mean, I just philosophically, I struggle with that.
Did they PSAT that they, okay.
All of them take the PSAT.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Yeah. So if we say that it's mandatory to take the PSAT, it makes sense to me that we might consider something else. I thought all sophomore's took that.
I don't get the answer.
Not anymore. They did back when my kids were there and when ours were there.
Yeah, it's now a Saturday offering.
No, it's an option.
But I'll get the sort of plan in place in terms of, we're, we're going to shore things up. Anything else on this part?
I hate that category because it just, it's hard to measure that.
Well, as soon as we realign to meet those component grades, then they'll change the target as to what we're-
I mean, allowing, trying to have seniors take more robust schedules as seniors when what they're doing now, some of them is taking college credit plus and getting credit for that, for college credit. It's, it's a balance. I mean, I don't know.
The other piece that you're getting right now is the quality profile report, which I like a lot better. Um, this is, this should be hitting mailboxes any day now, um, because they, uh, they've already been sent to the post office. And so this is sort of a sneak peek. I don't really have anything to go into, but I thought it was pretty interesting in terms of what we've put together. It's the third, um, annual quality profile report. There's also a pretty, um, robust version of this on the website. So if you lose this or you want to send it to somebody, um, please take a, take a minute to find it on the website and send it out. Um, but this is the other part, the other pieces that we do for our kids and for our community that, um, is not part of the report card, but is just as important as, um, the achieve, achievement scores, I believe. Just wanted to throw that out there.
This is nice. They do a nice job with this.
Do we do this in-house?
Somebody else prints it, but Betsy and Lauren, come on. And Betsy, Lauren and, and Cindy, thank you.
It's phenomenal.
They do a nice job with these.
I think it tells a full story.
And to me, it tells what we've been asked to do more and more by our community.
And it does. It reflects how we want our kids to excel.
Any questions or discussions on the quality profile at this point? Since we just got it, we can always bring things back to the meeting.
Absolutely, or shoot me an email.
Any further questions under this portion of the agenda? This is nice. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.